Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, March 20th of 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the City Administrator and Lisa to note the roll call of all members of the council not present because Counselor Briggs is absent and is on vacation. Move to the agenda and ask your approval of the agenda.
I'll move for approval of the agenda.
By Counselor Drobah to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Question.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and agenda is approved as presented. Thank you. We'll move to the minutes of the March 6th regular city council meeting and your pleasure with the approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
We have a motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve both the minutes of the March 6th regular city council meeting and the Monday, March 13th committee of the whole with the project steering team and the consultant. So, motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve both of those minutes.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Are there none? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, yes. Motion is carried and minutes for both are approved. Thank you. Then move to the resolution on transfers and payment of claims. And under transfers, we have to the general fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, a transfer of $18,285. To the permanent improvement fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, a payment of $25,000. And to the reserve for capital outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, a transfer of $17,428. Accounts payable claims, the City of International Falls has claims of $329,956.42. The Airport Commission claims $11,381.14. And Library Board claims of $12,374.91. Your pleasure with the resolution approving the transfers and the accounts payable claims.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Drobah, second by Counselor Jacksaw to adopt the resolution approving the transfers and the accounts payable claims. Is there any discussion with regard to the transfers, the claims, or the resolution?
I was wondering if we needed to arm wrestle to see who made the motion?
After we do that.
Okay.
Further discussions? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and the claims and the transfers are approved. Thank you. Audience, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time on any matter that's not, that they are not on the agenda for? There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting if someone cares to address the council at that time. We'll move to the public hearing and we'll have the first reading of the ordinance number 20 of the fifth series, an ordinance prohibiting excessive vehicle noise, including noise from trucks using engine retarding brakes, and adopting by reference Minnesota Statute Section 169.69 and 169.693 and Minnesota Rules Parts 7030.1000 to 7030.1050. Before, we have a motion on the possible first reading of the ordinance. I'm going to ask Chief Mastin came forth with a suggestion today, or recommendation, I would say, and that's in section two, if you have the ordinance in front of you. And Chief, as I understand your recommendation, it's to remove the wording at the very end of section two that would start after the word "noise" and would include taking out the words "and" does not comply with all applicable state laws and regulations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And then I would ask the City Attorney, your opinion with regard to the taking of that language out of the ordinance. Does that weaken the ordinance or does it do anything that you would have concern?
Contrary, Mr. Mayor, I think it improves the ordinance and I would agree with that suggestion. And I have one other suggested change. If we look to the paragraph just above that that defines abnormal or excessive noise, at the end of A where it says their property's value, comma, and then it goes to B, I would insert the word "or" before B, just like there's an "or" before C, so that any of those three things could be deemed excessive or abnormal noise and a violation of the change suggested by the chief. And this change would make it easier to enforce the ordinance.
All right. So, for consideration this evening, we would add after the word "value" in the definition, abnormal or excessive noise, we would put the word "or." And then in section two, at the end of that section, we would remove the words "and" does not comply with all applicable state laws and regulations. We would strike those words. With those recommended changes, as the council prepared to have the first reading of the ordinance.
Yes.
A motion then by?
Yes.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to have the first reading of ordinance number 20 of the fifth series prohibiting excessive vehicle noise. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drobah. Discussion on the motion or the ordinance. Please.
You know, when this was brought up at the last council meeting, we read through it and there was a lot of discussion on how is it enforceable? And I've had two weeks to think about it now. And whether it's enforceable or not, I guess I don't care. If we can pull people over and get it in their thought process, that it's going to slow them down or change their day-to-day thinking on the excessive sound that they're going to be making. For truckers, it's going to slow them down and time is money. So, whether we can prosecute this or not, I guess at this point, I don't care. If it slows people down, gets people quieter, I think that that will be better for the constituents. So, I'll support this.
Anyone else that wishes to speak with regard to the ordinance or adoption of the ordinance? Please. Could you come up and?
It's very simple. Very simple, sir.
Can you just give your name?
Brian Kilchazki.
Brian, thank you for coming.
Live on 11th Street. Very simple to enforce. Laws are already in the books. Manufacturers build these things perfectly and parts are available. So, there's no reason for these loud vehicles, like not the truckers so much, but the trucks. There's no reason for them to have the exhaust that they have, okay? Because it's all in parts. And you also have to stop the people in the town from doing that kind of work here. You know, throwing on glass packs or making makeshift exhaust systems, those are the things that you have to be on top of too. It's just not the people who are doing the noise, it's the people who are repairing the noises. And they need to be repaired properly. And there's laws for that too. And there's also laws for any mechanic. He can red tag a vehicle like right now with a policeman there. And that's it. It's done. You can red tag it. Any person involved in business of auto repair can red tag that vehicle. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forth. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to the noise ordinance? And my hopes are that this would be enforceable, that it will quiet down the trucks coming into the community, those vehicles that have had modifications to them so that they're making noise in the city streets, as we just heard. Would certainly like to see that come to an end in the community for the enjoyment of the citizens that live here. Further discussion? Are there none? I have the vote on the motion to adopt the first reading.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and the ordinance number five, number 20 of the fifth series has passed its first reading and will be on the agenda at the April meeting, first meeting in April for second reading. Thank you. Then move to the consent agenda, which has three items. One, to approve the travel and training expenses for Counselor Drobah to attend the League of Minnesota Cities Legislative Conference, March 23rd in St. Paul. To approve the travel and training expenses estimated at $5,265.88 for firefighters Mortensen and Harris to attend the FDIC international training. I assume it's FIRE, but some type of fire department training, but I don't know what FDIC stands for. April 25th to the 29th in Indianapolis. And to approve the travel and training expenses for the council and administrator attendance at the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, June 14th through the 16th in Rochester. Your pleasure with the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. And the first item under new business is the notice of the open book meeting to appeal property values and assessments that's scheduled for May 10, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Cooching County Assessor's Office at the courthouse. So, it's the information for the council and the public that that open book meeting will be on May the 10th from 9:00 to noon. Item number two under new business is a visit from servants of shelter to inform the council of plans for the purchase of a homeless shelter building.
Mr. Mayor?
Please come forth. You may sit down if you're comfortable.
We're actually not here to speak about our expansion, which we're still in the planning and financing stages of, which will hopefully go forward this year. That's in the earlier part of the summer if we continue the way that we have been because we've had a lot of community support and it's been fantastic and much needed. What we are here to talk about is we're asking for city council's endorsement for the Homes for All. It's almost, well, essentially an umbrella funding increase at the state level. So, it wouldn't be anything that you would endorse spending out of city or county finances, but just more as a municipality, as a city council endorsing this funding increase. It's increasing the funding to across 10 different agencies, about six of which operate here in our county. They offer everything from emergency shelter funds to transitional housing to first-time home buyer. So, this helps increase affordable housing as well as housing for the most vulnerable in our community. It's another, could be another boost to infrastructure as well because it's based on helping people in need find housing that's within their budget and also maintain that housing. And so, it's, there's, like I said, 10 different programs and they're outlined there that the funding would increase for. We know that this is a tough year to get funding increases in anything, but we believe that housing is something that has a positive influence. The investment that we make in housing often tends to have economic benefits that far outweigh the investment and can be really long-term and something that we face a lot in our community as far as, as far as affordable housing being an issue that affects, affects a large amount of our population. So, we just wanted you to consider that if you have any other questions about it, about the endorsement. The endorsement would, essentially you would endorse it and we would pass that endorsement on through a resolution to Bach and Rob Eklund and just say, you know, we are supportive of this as well. So, that when they go into budget negotiations, they have that in mind.
So, endorsement by the city would be to be able to share with State Senator Bach and State Representative Eklund that the city council is in support of the capital investment request?
Correct.
That you have placed before us?
Correct.
And that's the $80 million in infrastructure bonds and $20 million in general obligation bonds?
That's in total. That's the base funding for these 10 programs that are operated through Minnesota Housing and the Department of Human Services. So, there are no new programming. This is all programs that are in effect and have been in operation for quite some time. It, I believe it comes to about $30 million increase, an increase of $30 million across those 10 programs. And it's broken down there in that table. Yes. So, that's.
Okay. Questions for Arianna?
Thank you for coming and informing the council on this important initiative at the state. We've supported a number of initiatives at the state and this really fits in with the city's interest in the health and well-being of all citizens in the city. The health and well-being of the city rests on the health and well-being of each resident and those residents need decent housing. And we do have some lax, as I'm sure your organization struggles with those lax. Thank you for coming. And Cynthia Warren and Patty Buer.
And I'm available at the office if you have any questions. I know that you just got this information now and I apologize for presenting it to you here. So, please follow up with me if you have any questions at all.
Just for my knowledge, on the handout that you gave us, on the section in the dark green where it says housing is a strong investment, the second bullet there says in 2016, $80 million in state bonding, leverage $300 million in private and local funding. And was that, is there some other bonding that was done besides the bonding?
Well, some of these funds, like the Emergency State, the Emergency Services Program, it's only a 50-50 split. So, any agency that applies for those funds has to privately raise the matching funds. So, that's one of the ways in which it's leveraged. I think they're also considering community beyond private support, also municipal and economic development boards and everyone else who matches funding for some of this state funding to try to increase affordable housing stock and first-time home buyers.
Okay. Very good.
It is, yeah.
Further questions? Please.
Would it be in order to suggest that we do a resolution or send a letter? What would you?
A resolution or in the form of a letter would be fine. We just wanted to raise awareness and see if we couldn't give a little bit of support from up here for this initiative.
Motion to have a resolution of support?
Resolution and a letter, both to be delivered to servants of shelter to be moved in your packet down to the, you want to send all the materials together?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, that they would be directed, the materials would be directed to the servant of shelter's office?
I accept Counselor Jacksaw's motion for a resolution of support and a letter to servants of shelter to pass on to State Representative and State Senator. Is there a second to the motion to adopt the resolution? Second by Counselor Drobah. Discussion on the motion or the resolution?
I would really like a resolution that we write before we hand it off. Is there a rush on this? If we were to have a resolution written in the next two weeks and inhabit it at our first council meeting?
I think that would be fine.
In April, that would be fine?
Yeah. I think it'd be fine. This legislative session's going to take a while, I think, to work out the budget. I think as long as we get it there.
April 3rd would be.
Yeah. Yeah, it's when they go in.
Could we table this until then?
For the next meeting.
And we have a resolution ready for our adoption at the next meeting?
Motion.
I would move to table to our next meeting.
Motion by Counselor Drobah to table for the, to the next regular city council meeting. Have the resolution available to the council. Is there a second to the motion to table?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Pearson.
Available.
Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and the motion is tabled to the regular city council meeting in April and we'll have that resolution for consideration.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three on the new business is to approve and consent to the mayor's appointment of Terry Murray to the North Cooching Area Sanitary District Board of Directors for the James Rob vacant term ending January 31st of 2019. I make that appointment of Mr. Terry Murray and ask your approval of that.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Drobah.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I'm sure that Terry Murray will serve well. However, there were two women who stepped forward weeks ago to serve on the sewer board and therefore I will not support this appointment. We had Crystal Clance, who's been at every sewer board meeting, and I also put my name in. And I feel that it was a search for anybody but us and I'm affronted by that and I won't support this nomination.
Thank you, Counselor Jacksaw. I did, had not received the application. I know you expressed that at a city council meeting, but had not received an application and did have Mr. Murray come in and apply for the position. And so, and his father served on the board for many years and he was very interested in serving and so I make that appointment and we have the motion to approve that appointment and unless there's further discussion, I would call the question.
Aye.
No.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and consent to approve the appointment. Thank you. Item number four under new business is to approve the employee assistance agreement between Sand Creek Group Limited and the City of International Falls. That agreement would run from March 2017 to March 2018 at the cost of $2,722.50. Pleasure with that employee assistance agreement.
I move on the agreement.
Motion by Counselor Drobah.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agreement. Hear none? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and the agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number five is to approve the acceptance of the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Award of $5,000 for training reimbursement and to authorize the request for reimbursement. Chief Manassas, do you want to come forth and explain the wonderful receipt of $5,000?
Thank you, Mayor. Every year for the last, I think we're on year nine now, the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education has done a grant and the way it operates is they have a set amount of money they give per firefighter, per department. They reached their goal this year of $200 per firefighter. So, we had 25 firefighters on our roster to equal the $5,000 grant reimbursement. So, what this is used for is required training events. There's a list of pre-designated events you can use. We recently had our training at the Water Tower with confined space and rope rescue that fit the criteria. That was a $7,200 bill for that training. This would reimburse us for $5,000 of that. I would recommend when we do the reimbursement that we put the full $7,200 on there. There are departments in the area, in the state, not in the area, in the state that do not use up all their training funds and it goes out for redistribution again. So, we're always told to go a little higher than what we get and we might get a second round of redistribution. And we did take advantage of that last year. I don't recall the additional money we got on top of what we were awarded last year, but we did get the redistribution. So, hopefully we can take advantage of that again this year.
So, there's possibility of some discretionary funds at the end?
Absolutely.
Very good.
So, the money they have set aside, they use and if?
It's surprising that not everybody applies.
And there are reasons for that. Some of the smaller departments may not do the training that, when I say required, it is a requirement, an NFP requirement, but with smaller, all volunteer departments, it's hard to reach that training goals and requirements. So, some of them don't have the classes available that fit the criteria for the money either, for the funding. This was in place to help that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the education award and also apply at the full amount of $7,200 as you recommended.
Thank you. Accept Counselor Jacksaw's motion to approve the acceptance of the education award of $5,000 from the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drobah. Discussion on the grant or the motion? Hear none? Question?
Aye. Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Grant is accepted. Appreciate the good work on the part of the fire department.
Thank you.
Item number six under new business is to authorize and direct the city attorney to review chapter six of the 2017 Minnesota Session laws related to off-sale intoxicating liquor sales on Sunday in order to recommend updates and changes to chapter five, liquor, wine, and beer licensing and regulation in the city's code of ordinances. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, the legislature, as it was described in the cover memo I provided, had adopted this law affecting intoxicating liquor sales on Sunday. The law actually includes specific hours between 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. allowing it. And our existing code of ordinances has some other standards that prohibit those sales and so we need to have the city attorney visit our law and make sure that it complies with the new law that the legislature adopted and the governor signed on March 7th to make sure we comply with the new legislation. The council does have some discretion in terms of what hours we set in the city for Sunday liquor sales, but the League of Minnesota Cities is recommending that the city attorney review the law and provide recommendations. So, we have. review the law and provide recommendations, so we have lesser hours in between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00 p.m., but we need to be open at some point, so. This action, we're just asking that you refer to the city attorney. He can review the new legislation and then make some recommendations about how our law, our local ordinance should be revised, and as we have to with any ordinance, we have to have a first reading, a second reading, and it's not effective until published in the local paper, so. It is effective July 1st of this year, and the first Sunday in July is July 2nd, so we need to adopt it sometime before then.
The council's pleasure with directing the city attorney to review and update the liquor, wine, and beer licensing regulations.
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion on the state law or the ordinance? Any direction that we want to give the city attorney at this time with regard to hours? You said they were 11:00 to 6:00 p.m.? The state law, so we can have less hours but not more, would be my understanding of the law. Okay? And it would be well to advise off-sale liquor license holders at the present time not to open on Sunday before July 1st?
Would it make sense for us to bring in to the conversation the local business owners that sell liquor to see how they feel about what the city's ordinance would be at this time?
It would be an opportunity before we finalize the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, my intention was to probably send a brief letter to all the people that currently hold a off-sale license and let them know that if the council sets a first reading for this first meeting, let them know when the meeting date is so that they have a couple of weeks to come up with some proposed language, and we can make those copies available to them at the meeting.
Meet with the city attorneys?
Sure, I should be able to do that, Mr. Mayor, and have some proposal ready for--
All right, so that would include a letter going out to the off-sale license holders from the city administrator advising them of the proposed language for the changes for Sunday liquor sales. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and the city attorney has got that one to have for the next meeting. Thank you. Any other new business? We'll go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I have no special report, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Maston?
Nothing, sir.
Chief Manasa?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Move to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Go to the audience again. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council at this time on any All right, thank you. And I just would note under correspondence, the Public Library's annual report, it's a great report, and thank you to Diane Adams for that annual report, and that the letter has gone out to Representative Nolan and U.S. Senators Franken and Klobuchar as directed at the last meeting. And the next regular city council meeting is on Monday, April 3rd at 4:30. At 6:30 this evening, the county board will have a public hearing on the business subsidy tax abatement for the Granite Digital Project, and that's at the county boardroom at 6:30. There being nothing further to come before the city council at this time, we'll stand adjourned.